I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District one, Mr. Runyon.
Here.
District two, Mr. Lloyd. District three, Mr. Hick.
Here.
District four, Mr. Mason.
Here.
District five, Mr. Clay.
Here.
District six, Ms. Chatwell.
Here.
District seven, Mr. Colman.
Here.
District eight, Mr. Platt.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Can I get them to go through the agenda? So, any discussion?
Um, if you can confirm what we discussed yesterday, um, whether the RFP would use, um, if you could session tonight, if you can run it by me, let's say the company name, it should be in our discussion.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, if you thumb through the packet, I don't see, unless the company is company A and B, that we're discussing, it's not, okay? So I really think we have that information, so. Um, any other discussion on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Um, just as a matter of, I've stated this again from, since July one of twenty twenty-two, when I first came to work here, um, that just for public record, my son does work for a regional contractor, and my husband does work for a local HVAC company, and therefore anytime anything is of procurement matters, I recuse myself from the process. So I have subsequently recused myself from this entire process, and as you all know, I don't have a vote in this matter anyway. So I am seeing all of this for the first time today, just like you all are, so.
I have a question. I have a question. She's saying that, so if you do have someone involved in that, and we're looking at that, should it be considered or not considered?
I don't think it's a conflict at all. We don't know, we don't know who they are right now. She doesn't even know. I don't know.
I don't know what I asked you. What I asked is that the contract, the cause is that. If there is somebody we're looking at, because they have been members of your family.
Well, according to the code of Virginia, it's not a conflict.
It's not a conflict. Well, everybody's on faith of the contract, that's about it.
As long as it doesn't conflict with the code, we have reviewed it.
Uh, we have reviewed the code. Dr. Huskin, uh, on the day of the walkthrough informed me that a company was on site, that her, a family member does work for work.
On including interviews, bidders, offers, and discussions of terms, the scope, contract for discussion in the open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy the public body has authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one eight twenty-nine code of Virginia.
Motion, can I get a second?
I did.
You already did, say. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no.
No.
For how each one ranked. So for some categories, company A, um, came in higher, and other categories, company B came in higher. So it was spread across. But if you tally the total points for all categories, you will see company B had a higher rating for each of the four categories. If you look at the individual category, I've also calculated who ranked higher by each category. So just as a summary, company A scored high for one review overall. And for four, or for categorical totals, company A won the following categories: firm reputation, firm personnel, past performance, and similar, um, and with similar entities; cost of the firm's proposal, and then the firm proposed methodology, um, met the goals of what we outlined in the RFP. For company B, they won overall by three reviewers. So that was the company on this end that has three greens. For categorical totals, the company B won the following categories: quality of the proposal and safety record. So that's just a summation of what the evaluation review went through. Following the evaluation review, interviews were then scheduled with each of the two companies, which actually took place yesterday afternoon, where they were allowed to then further discuss the scope of work, their cost structure, and any potential value engineering options that would fit our budget. During the interviews, both, um, companies delivered highly detailed presentations and expressed a strong desire to begin the project immediately. Um, and both mentioned that the cost of material is continuing to rise daily, and the sooner they know, the better for everyone. So they, um, the RFP did define that we wanted a guaranteed maximum price. The way that I understand from both companies is they give us their best estimate, but the actual contract will be the guaranteed maximum price. So this is their best baseline. They called it the baseline. Um, since this was a design build, it does not allow for direct one-to-one comparison of what each company is proposing. So we will need to assess each packet individually based on what we requested from the RFP. So that means that price is not the defining term of the, um, proposal. We need to assess the proposals based on the project scope, whether it involves new construction versus renovation, and the overall depth of the project. So now we'll go in, if no questions, from what I've just gone through. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question to the chair and Mr. DeBoer.
Yes, sir.
Since we've had that discussion we just had before you guys came back. There's a couple of issues that seem to muddy the water with the term of reviews, uh, in this, in this A and B process that we deal in this RFP. Do we need to go back and let people hear what we're doing or do something because it seems like some people may have been told certain things, and they didn't live? Do we need an alternative to let them know about that so they can possibly do that?
Good point, um.
Oh, I thought so.
So, in, in, yeah, in my mind, and I am one member here, um, I would like to see these proposals, and if we feel that we need to open up the RFP for further, um, proposals to be submitted for renovation, I'm assuming we could do that process?
We can turn it down.
No, so you have to cancel this and start over? We'd have to start completely over? Yes, ma'am.
So these would not be valid at all?
Not, but they could use, they're saying, but what is the reason that they can?
Thank you, yes. Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah, I got somewhat related question. And this is kind of where I'm at, I mean, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the process, but I know at one point I'm probably also going to put RFP on new construction. Yeah, but it's like, it's hard for me to truly, I mean, measure with all these good proposals from any financial way when I don't have anything to compare to. I mean, it seems to me like makes you go out like one home week, one next week, and you have all in around the same time. So we have the ability to, do you know what I mean, to measure, like what am I measuring up against? Is this just a great option, or is it a horrible option? I don't know, because I don't have the, I don't have a baseline to compare to, that's all I'm saying. Just try to answer that part?
Yeah, well, I was gonna piggyback off what Mr. Lloyd's saying. Me personally, in my mind, I wanna have renovations, and I wanna have new at the same time. I think we're kicking in the wind right now. We've got one, don't have the other. I think with the conversation we just had, Mr. Potts brought up a great idea. I mean, a great, great thing to the board, what we talked about, and so did Mr. Lloyd. I think having both in our hands, we can make a logical, strategical decision with both in our hands. With that being said, the process, can you do new and, um, renovated at the same time? Can you have one, I mean, can we do that?
Uh, yes, you can, in fact. You kinda are, you're not replacing every single thing. Take the stadium, for example. You're leaving the old stands, uh, the home stands, where they are is one proposal, and moving to the west side, all new. You're taking a track. You're not completely starting all over.
Not to interrupt you, but I think the question is, if you want one proposal, like a second RFP that is completely new construction?
Tear it all down.
Yeah.
Build it all back.
Bulldoze it.
In one step?
Yeah.
Y'all can do, as a board, you can do anything you want.
I mean, I think that's the only way you have a true comparison of it, without a degree.
Am I completely, like, did I agree this, or did we not vote to put RFP out for new construction as well?
You did, as you wanted this first.
Okay. So, in other words, the meeting we're having here today is kinda mute, because what I'm hearing is that as a board, as a board, what I'm hearing is that there might be several members that want to table this until we have new construction, RFPs back. And is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, and so, I believe we were, and maybe I'm wrong as well, but I thought we were gonna hold off on that because it is maybe a new component in some of these. We will look at this, and yes, we did vote, and I'm with, with Mr. Clay, I certainly wanna see new construction alongside, uh, the renovation. I think we all agree that that's the only way that we will make a informed decision by looking at all, all available paths.
So that's our option, they go through one of these, and then we can go back to you, or?
So, I, I.
This is a step.
I think it's more much than that step. We gonna need to look at this, and we gonna do that. I think we gonna need to look at A and B at all.
Agreed.
And we gonna do it, we need to still be close.
How long? I do need to know the direction.
Huh? Excuse me, Dr. Buck, what did you say?
I do need to know the direction of when you say new. Um, are we going to be requesting design build as new? Or are we going to be requesting the other way, where you get architects first, then they put out for construction under the CNWR?
I think you have to do design build, because otherwise we don't have numbers.
Right, so these are design builds, so we, which means, and I'm, I'm just saying this, each one could be completely different, meaning design could be totally different, pricing therefore would be completely different.
Well, I think it's fixed there. And again, I'm gonna do one hundred percent clear, make sure nobody misses something, is what I'm saying here. We have had past conversations, and we have to, so we have to keep it. I'm not saying we have to use designs if they don't miss a picture, that's not what I'm saying. But at least we have other, you know, like we have thoughts in mind of what we want to use, and we can use that to develop specs.
But we can't use that, we've already been told like that.
No, no, but we got thoughts of what we do.
Oh, okay, okay.
We got a picture in our mind of what we want this to look like.
I know.
Yeah, we've greened over time a picture in our mind of what we want to look like, and we can use that to develop specs. That's what I'm saying. I mean, again, I may be off base, I'm not saying use anything from the far, but.
Yeah. My, my worry is, we had six companies within initial walkthrough. We received two bids back. If we just say, we're not gonna look at these until we get new back, are we gonna get two people, we gonna get six people back, or we gonna get no people, no companies coming back to look at the renovation? Or we gonna?
I didn't say that.
No, I didn't say that. So, that, that's my worry of just saying, we're not gonna look at these today.
But we didn't say that. But we didn't say we're gonna be going back and doing, we gonna redo these. These are staying the same. What we're gonna do is put the RFP out on new construction.
Yeah, but, well, I mean, the problem is, is that these, there's a timeline that these companies have to know by, whether, in order for them to, to be able to move forward on the time that they've got on it.
That shows, that shows what's happening when we rush into this.
Well, that's, that's why I raised my hand. So, I, 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 I would suggest, and, I mean, please, by all means, maybe we go ahead, get the presentation for these two, and say, all right, A or B?
If we lose.
If we, if we go this route, we are gonna choose A or B. Then, we get with Dr. Bucklou before we leave here today, so that we are not delaying this process. And we tell him what we want this RFP to look like for new construction, get it out there, and then once we get those back, we can compare those to whichever one here that we show.
In, in my mind, today, if, if we were moving forward, we would pick one of these.
Correct, correct.
Alleviate this one, and if we're renovating, company whatever would, we would move forward with that. And then we would send out new construction RFPs. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we got same process walkthroughs, whatever, we beat back here, go with that. At that point, then we can say.
If we're gonna do, we would take this one.
Right.
Anyway, that.
And then, you get it down to A new and A renovation, and then we go.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, it, at the end of the day, when we get back, you know, RFPs for new construction, it's not gonna, RFPs for new construction is not gonna change whether we pick A or B for renovation.
Correct.
We're working, have that in our minds, so let's, let's do that.
Just to clarify, there isn't a timeline on this. To respond to.
Oh, I thought there was a timeline, I mean, I was looking at a timeline.
No, there, there's no timeline.
What may happen is prices may change.
Project timeline and milestones. Right, but.
That's not, that, that's not a timeline that they give.
I get, I, I get that. What my, what my concern is, is that if this company's timeline states this, and we delay what their timeline states, it could potentially delay the entire process, and then we're going way back into where we were with the previous build, where it was told that the school board kicked the can down the road the whole time. That's my concern.
Yes, Ms. Yaw.
Just to add on to that, the dollar amounts are as of now as well, and depending on how far it take or how long it take to get the new back, which I do think we, we need to be able to compare, um, it, it might change the dollar amounts as well for a new construction.
Absolutely.
And we might end up if we, if we choose one, and then, excuse me, we have to wait six months to get the new stuff back, although it didn't take that long. But the companies may say, now we're busy, and then we draw their bid. It's a possibility. Yeah.
So, yeah, the thing, what we did is stepped into it the way we did.
We still need to make the right decision like that.
We, we stepped into it, we should have done both of these at the same time, because we didn't think about that at the same time. Because I have to look at this, I have to look at it. So, but I, I still have stronger, because we might end up getting, getting ourselves in trouble by doing it the opposite way, because nobody's ever probably done this before. I mean, we have to, we need to find out. But we gonna need to look at this and pick one, and then say, we gonna go and, and put the other one out, because do these people gonna feel like we doing them wrong?
Yeah. So, so, talk, talking about your timeline, Stacy.
I'm sorry.
Talk something about your timeline, if you look here, and it says designing, it's got the timeline right there. We can't meet this timeline, so that's why there's no timeline.
No, I'm not saying there's, that's not what I'm saying, Jimmy.
I know what you're saying, but even, even though what you're saying is, is the prices are gonna change because of time, am I correct?
You are correct.
Right, which is, which is what I'm referring to as timeline. We can't kick can down the road like, like.
Even if we choose this, the prices are gonna change. Correct?
But it's about how much they will change, though, is, is what I'm saying. We have to, we, we've got to keep time into consideration. We can't just look at something today and wait two years, a year from now, and expect, you know.
Yeah, but if we approved it, if you approved it today and say, we gonna go with this.
I'm all for that.
But, but I'm just saying, it doesn't matter if they don't start building to twenty twenty-six, that timeline is not, prices are gonna change. Am I right?
I'm not, okay.
I know what you're saying, too.
And, and just to make sure, to clarify that, we can't say, if we're waiting for new, which it sounds like we, we need to have that fact, we can't say we choose this company or this company. We have to say, this is our top choice.
Of these two.
Of these two, pending the rest of the proposals.
Yeah.
Excuse me, you need to clarify, we're not proposing, proposing, because you're, you're inclined, you're inclined to use instead of new. But we need to be extremely specific when we say it, because what you just said, just then, is that we're talking about increasing it, and we're not increasing that. Because I'm not even looking at this.
Mr. Potts brought up a good point. Likely none of us from Mr. Potts, in coming this way down, that way, have done this before. Ms. Fishers, you have done this before.
Proportional, yeah.
So, um, would you suggest that we look at these proposals, and, and Mr. Lloyd, and I think Ms. Runyon brought up, select the best path forward of the two options we have, and then request new construction RFPs to go back?
What I've always advised is this, you got a shot at something that just don't come every year. So you need to take a good look at what you wanna do, and everybody get on board with the thing. And I said that months ago at our meeting, whatever y'all decide, let's everybody get together and do it. Because you can't keep kicking it down the road.
I wish you was here five years ago.
So I guess what Mr. Mason is, is asking, would you wanna see renovation and new together? Would that be the best route? Or would the best route be just do this first, and then go with the new? What would you recommend, seeing it all together and going over this? Because we gotta rely on, you've done this, we have. You, and fully rely on this, it won't hurt our feelings.
In, in, in my limited knowledge of building a sports complex, very limited knowledge, I'm afraid if we get, and I do wanna see all the numbers, but I'm afraid if we have a meeting, and we're looking at renovation, and we're looking at new, I don't know if my brain is gonna be able to process all of that. I think it's gonna be a lot.
Well, how much is new, how much is old, what's your goal? It all depends on your budget. I mean, we could turn around and build a Shane Stadium if you got the money to do it.
Don't think we do.
Right. But, uh, you're always gonna have some renovation in with new, unless you're gonna completely, completely do all new.
Well, that's what they want an RFP for, is completely new. That's what they wanna put an RFP out for now, is put everything new, not one single thing being reviewed. Well, we're looking at one, one complex, one location, which would mean.
It's just time. And, and I'm really glad you're looking at different things, but, because like I said, it's like building a new school, or new building, or whatever, you don't get that every day.
It's pretty rare, you don't get that every day.
Right.
Mr. Lloyd, yes, sir?
I have a question specific to the proposals.
Well, I'm not even sure if we're going in there. I'm not, I'm not, personally.
No.
Yes.
See, see what's happening, y'all talking, you missing the fact that we, we, we may not even look at this.
Well, I'm just saying, at some point, we're gonna.
But not today, we might not look at it today.
Well, I think that's a board decision.
That's what I'm saying, we might not, I mean.
Has somebody made a motion?
No.
Oh, okay.
We're just discussing about what the possibility is.
Unless there is a motion to not look at this, I would like to move forward with the presentation.
Unless there is a motion to not look at this, I would like to move forward with the presentation. But again, that is just me, and if anybody wants to...
Does anybody have a motion, or are we gonna...
That was the whole purpose of today, I suppose.
Are we gonna review these or not? Do we wanna review them or not? Anybody had a motion not to?
The only thing I was asking, what, what was the best practice, and I wanted to call the expert.
You need to look at all your options.
That, that tells you right back.
But do we need to look at all the options at one time, or can we look at these and then the other option? What would you, what do you think is the best protocol? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I, I wanna know the best, and, and what, I think he answered my questions when he said he need to look at all the options. I, do you wanna compare renovation now, and then six months running in a row, get the new, or do we wanna do it three or four months down the road?
It's gonna take three months.
I'm just, I'm using my channel. Uh, two months down the road, two months down the road, we got all four, oh, we got all, we got renovation here, we got new here, let's have a meeting on all of them. What is, what is your suggestion? What would you do, recommend to the board? Would you recommend hearing one, or hearing them all at the same time? And why are you thinking, if I could make one comment? In my mind, again, and this is just in my mind, which is probably not correct, at least today, if we do these, and say, all things being equal, if we were gonna renovate, we would choose company, whatever, we are making a move. Otherwise, we are...
Mr. Potts? ...in this new parking lot. And that's where the current storage house is behind the current... Women. And, um, when you have the expectation of twenty-one hundred spectators plus a thousand, you have to go by the greatest number, um, based on this presentation. The entire complex will then be ringed with security fencing, um, around the track and field to keep spectators and competitors separated during competition. Next page. On the other side of the middle school road, they've created a second complex for baseball and softball, consistent with requirements of the RFP, which also include a few of their own ideas. Perimeter fencing combined softball, baseball, and tennis complex. So, this proposal does want to propose moving the tennis court next to the softball field, and having that whole complex fenced in. Um, they're gonna provide all new backstops and outfield walls, provide new player benches, baseball field, uh, at the baseball field, with the perimeter enclosures and overhead canopy. Renovate the player benches at the softball field. Renovate all the toilets and concession stands. And when, um, they showed their drawings in the following pages, the toilets, they're swapping at the baseball field, the men's and women's, so that they can get enough room for your ADA compliance. Um, the concession will be built back to the way it is with all updated, um, accessories and countertops. All new LED lighting on both fields, and then, modification of the concession stand for a drop window at the concession. Um, spectator stands at both fields for a capacity of four hundred and two hundred respectfully. Um, so, four hundred at baseball, two hundred at softball, including ADA compliant seating. A differentiation from your RFP, this is a difference that they're providing, is rather than re-surface your tennis court, tennis courts in the current location, we propose to relocate them adjacent to your softball field to provide spectator benches. The new field location will then be within five hundred feet of the toilet room, such that tennis players and spectators may use the toilet facility. This is necessary because of the location, the tennis court, the tennis court, tennis courts are not within five hundred feet of the new school building or any other facility. So, locating the tennis, relocating the tennis courts is necessary. And we ask the follow-up question, what will happen to the existing tennis court? Their proposal is to leave them as they are and allow the community to continue to use them.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm personally sorry that came, but I do have to leave for other obligations. So, if I can quickly just give my opinion, and then you guys can do what you need to do. Looking through, and I thank you for the summer. It, it looks like it's ninety percent new stuff. It's very little that's able to be renovated, except the field house and some stuff. Both of the proposals, from, from my quick review, show pretty much everything new, except it's staying in the same location. So, personally, I think it's really important to see the new, um, RFPs and proposals, where we have one facility that's all imposed and secure versus having this here, this here, and this here, with, um, all of the security implemented and staffed and all of that, and you see the different location. Out of the two, my preference would be company A, based on the price and, and some of the, um, design stuff. But, um, yeah, that's preliminary review, and we haven't gone through all of it, so there's part of the stuff that I didn't miss, but, um, that would be my, my thoughts on it. Sorry, I, I got them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna hold an apology for A and B, or ask questions about B or Y?
Well, I, I, I do, Ms. Yaw, we have to give, so if you, I would say, let them keep going. At the end of A, we can ask questions on A, and then, at the end of B, y'all can just jump down. I knew she was on time restraint, so I broke my own rule.
Are you going on B now, or A?
No, we're still on A.
I'm still in, um, page twenty of A.
Yeah, alright, Dr. Buckloo.
Yes, sir. Um, there is a couple of pictures that we can go through, so we get a visualization of what they were talking about in the summary I just gave for you. So, if you go to page twenty, you see the football, soccer, and track field complex. The changes that you will notice is the widening of the entire complex. They are, um, with the stormwater, they're looking at some of the trees on the north, north side. It may have to be removed to extend that area for stormwater. The track, um, will be completely graded up and redone as new. The field house will be gutted, but walls will stay in the place in which they are, with all new concrete sealed flooring, um, all new appliances and, and everything, lockers, everything, lighting, HVAC, all the things, except for equipment. Equipment will not be replaced. Um, that would be on us to do, so that's not included in the RFP bid. Um, all new fencing, cameras, uh, sound system, and lighting. The home stand is much larger than the visitor stand. The visitor stand in this proposal is an open concept, so there is no storage underneath. It is just bleachers, that's traditional bleachers go, in front of the field house, and that's for your visitors. Number three on the map is the new visitor side toilet room. Number six on the map is the ADA parking that I spoke of a few minutes ago. If you bring your eyes over to number four, that is your new concession stand and home side toilets with storage in the back.
Right below the green?
Yes, right below the green. So, that's in a completely different location than, than we currently see at the, at the football field.
And that is the roof of the football field and the soccer field command?
Yes.
It's gonna look like that.
Yes, so the soccer field is in the center, and the striping will be overlaying the football field, field goal on. Alright, so we'll move to page twenty-one. This is a closer look of the field house. The layout is much the same as what we have currently. They have, um, had to widen a couple of the restrooms, so that they are ADA compliant, but overall, the layout is the same. Um, and like I said, the equipment will not be included. If you note, the ticket booth, there's this little box right here with three windows, and that is, when you come into the entrance gate, right at number five. Then, go to page twenty-two. Page twenty-two, on the left-hand side, is the new concession slash restroom. So, as you can see, they have accounted for that many toilets. On the right-hand side are the visitor side restrooms.
Visitor side?
Yes, this is the visitor side. The visitor side is accounted for a thousand fans, whereas, uh, the left side is for twenty-one hundred fans. We did ask the question, can porta-johns be used instead as a cost-saving method, instead of making this bit as big as these are? Yes is the answer. Those do meet compliance. When you have track meets, you can bring in extra toilets, rather than building a hundred and fifty toilets on our property. Page twenty-three, is your, is your baseball, softball, and tennis complex? So, if you look, you'll see that they are moving a brand-new tennis court over, adjacent to the softball field. That's number seven on page twenty-three. This will, in their words, alleviate the need for a restroom house up at the top of the hill for the current location, which if we were to hold meets, we could either bring in toilets, um, rental toilets, or we could build a field bathroom for the tennis. That alleviates those costs, and it allows us to lock a gate around it. So, something interesting, um, with the baseball, I wanna make sure you understand, the dugouts would be brought up to grade. They would no longer be stunk in. They said that the girls', uh, softball field, the dugouts looked pretty good, so those would just get a facelift. They would be matching roofing from baseball to softball. Number two is a ticket booth that would be centralized in a sidewalk area for admissions. Page twenty-four is...
Ms. Ellen Parker?
Sorry?
Ms. Ellen Parker?
Seven?
Tennis court.
Tennis court.
Tennis court.
That's the new...
One, two.
Oh, one is the existing bus parking lot behind the high school.
It's made the stage.
It's already there.
The stage, yeah.
Yes. On page twenty-four, they lay out the bathroom and concession stands. The baseball is on your left-hand side. The press box, so what they have proposed is basically gutting the inside, updating them. They have to do some rearrangement for ADA compliance on the men's, the ladies, um, was a little bit easier to work with. Um, the press box would just be a new square room with new flooring, roofing, and wall, interior walls. They're proposing bringing in a metal shed for storage, rather than having it underneath the concession, or behind the concession, where it currently is, and they're doing that for expansion of restrooms. So, there, they do have a metal shed proposal on the property. The right-hand side is your softball. Um, they are flipping the men's and women's restrooms, so that they can get the required number of stalls in for women, and, um, basically, they're putting some storage in behind the concession. The concession is just a room with countertops and electrical outlets. They will be bringing heat, electric heat into both of these units. Currently, there is no heat. Next page, twenty-five. This breaks down the cost structure. Um, that's pretty self-explanatory. Football, soccer, and track, total of four million, six hundred and seventy dollars, thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty dollars. Sorry about that. Baseball, total of one million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. Softball, total of one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. Tennis, total of nine hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. Field house, total of one million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Visitor concession renovation, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. New home concession and ticket booth, one million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And the site improvement, if you look into the wording in that, that's adding well-lit walkways from each build, including exterior signs, perimeter fencing, and all the security cameras, for four hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars, for a total of twelve million, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. The next two pages are just line itemed out. Um, they're quite small, uh, but this is the way it printed when they sent it. They do have some alternatives of deductive value engineering. Um, let me read that to you. The first one is alternative one. They can repair the lip in the infield, laser grade the distributed area, and provide one zone irrigation behind arc of infield, but no outfield irrigation, and then, only repair the sod in this area. And that saves you a hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Then, in the softball field, they propose, uh, repairing the field only and deleting the irrigation work. That saves you eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixteen. And finally, um, not including bleachers for the tennis courts. That saves you sixty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Not including what?
Bleachers at the tennis court.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was like, what did she say? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that overview. That is, in my opinion, a really good, uh, good proposal. Broad, broad sweeping. Um, questions on proposal A, um, Ms. Yaw?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the first thing that I circled, when we started, in a comfortable conversation, it's totally, because you're tolerating it, and minimally comfortable, because it's hard to run a lot. But I know that the only thing they asked from the very beginning of this is, please make sure that our baseball dugout is in a, like, mecca burn, where the, um, you know, above grade wasn't a concern, but they wanted to make sure that it was enclosed, where, you know, you don't just have the chain with things, that you've got every mom, every, um, baby brother, and they're coming up to the fence distracting the players. You know, they wanted, you know, a professional-looking dugout where it's enclosed around. So, I can't really tell if I'm just, they just said, um, with whatever enclosures, but over here it can't be. I don't know what that means, you know, like, I think that would be something that if we went that route, we'd be definitely on the sure that it was, and maybe block dug, uh, block dugouts. I don't think above, of underground. Maybe above, that's better enough, where about the, the drainage issues.
How, how are those dugouts? Now, I know, years ago, they were down low, but fifty?
Probably fifty, fifty.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, I mean, any higher level dugout is enclosed, so you don't have distractions and people. I mean, with the safety issues, people taking things in there and things like that. And then, my last comment on option A, I guess, would be, it seems like the possible exclusions that they offer, in the big scheme of things, would be a change, but except for them, it is excluding.
It seems small.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
With the value of not gonna be sixty thousand, when you're talking about fifteen million.
Exactly.
Yes. Excellent.
Yeah, I actually, I like the action, option of security, a secure complex. Things I don't like, I don't like the baseball organization, things like that, but I do like the security. So, I think they did a good job incorporating security.
Any other comments or questions on the first proposal, company A? That metal building that they're talking about in between, I think a, a metal building of storage, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I think we had talked about, when we did this, a metal building that would be big enough, multi-purpose, because going into this new school, we don't want any baseballs hitting this gym floor, or, or, or anything like that's gonna trade this...
or anything like that's gonna tear this gym floor up that we got in a brand-new school. So soccer, baseball, tennis, football, we need a multi-purpose building in between that and I think that metal storage unit you're talking about that they're putting up, we probably could turn it into a multiple-purpose building. We gotta have some weapon in the process, I mean, just, look, this gym we got, superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong, it's taken a beating over the years, am I right?
Oh, yeah, it's in terrible shape.
It's in terrible shape, I mean, it's dentsoil in the floor and I'm sure that come from not having anyone practice baseball. I mean, you know, or softball, so, you know, the only thing I would like to see is that metal building being used as a multi-purpose building to, not only for stores, but for the kids to be able to go in. When it's raining, very few days, I'm going out and have full practice.
Football.
Football.
Soccer.
Soccer, do the same thing. Get a softball in there, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Anything else on this one? Anybody? Okay, carry on, company B, please.
All right, company B, we had a handout, company B. So this does contain preparatory information and I apologize, I was just to get Miss Shotwell's copies without just to leave our building, but I didn't realize that was early. I apologize for that. Just because they do have a statement in Virginia code, we need to get those back. The renovation of the softball, baseball, football field and track facilities around the football softball field, this proposal actually has new construction and renovation construction that includes restroom, renovation of the field house, provisions of ADA parking, renovation of visitor restrooms, rebuild of existing tennis courts with restrooms, sidewalks and parking in the current location. So as we go through here, we'll go ahead to page nine, which is your first artwork. This gives the layout of the proposal. They are using architects, they've already contacted them and they have designed and engineered everything that you see on these pages, and that is why it's preparatory. So this proposal will include, as I just said, all of the new field, fencing, competition surfaces, buildings while renovating the existing, so it makes sense to accommodate code compliance, improving the sports program with modern facilities that support your program goals. Then page ten, at our current tennis location, they are proposing grading out every bit of what is there and rebuilding new tennis courts on compacted ground that includes asphalt within the soil that will keep it from moving and sinking and hitting. New fence with fabric and windscreen in the fencing. They're proposing putting a parking lot rather than having a dirt pull-off right in front of the tennis court with an, you know, you can see in the picture there. Adding a sidewalk from the parking lot to the entrance of the tennis court and then having the option of building a restroom slash storage area for the players. They will bring in all-new lighting and it will also have security cameras and signage of what we dictate the signage to say. So they will literally move ground on that one. Page eleven is the softball improvement. Starting with the renovation of the restrooms, the current building will stay. They will gut it and bring it back the way that it is and the press box, the same method. They will remove all the existing bleachers and replace them completely. They will paint slash replace the roofs of the existing dugouts, they're not in bad shape. So they're proposing bringing a theme across the whole complex that matches, so everything will be unified. New field lights with new poles, because those are wooden poles, so those will get all-new. Regrade the entire field and properly drains the playing field. New fencing and a new warning track. New digital scoreboard, new lighting, sidewalks, security cameras and signage. And these security cameras for both bids tie in with our current high school one. So I wanted to mention that to you. Both of them are meeting that requirement. Number twelve, page twelve, is your baseball improvements. The proposal is to remove and replace the existing bleachers and make sure they're ADA compliant, renovate the restroom concession and press box, remove and replace the existing dugouts on both sides, new lighting, sidewalks, security cameras and signage, address playing field drainage, new scoreboard, new perimeter fencing and warning track. And then the poles will stay, but all-new lighting for the field. Now the stadium. So we're just gonna start from the upper left-hand corner. They're going to replace the existing stands and make everything ADA compliant. Twenty-one hundred seats with the new press box on the west side of the field. A new home side concession that will be, you can follow the arrows, behind the press box down towards the bottom. That won't have a kitchen, but it will have dry goods and refrigeration. Uplighted electric, field lights and scoreboard. Grass, paper, fire truck access. So you can see that goes around the, from the home stand to the entry, based on the arrow. New concourse sidewalks with the perimeter of track fencing. New lighting, sidewalks and security cameras and new signs. They're going to completely replace the field. So they're digging that whole thing out and bringing in new. They're gonna regrade the entire track and put a brand-new surface there as well. They're gonna renovate the existing visitor bathrooms. They're going to have new paved parking bus area, which is something, we have a gravel lot right now. Renovate the locker room, weight room and meeting room. Renovate the visitor bleachers, which are our current home stand, that's gonna get a renovation and the storage will remain underneath. And then new entry with ticket and concession rooms and storage. So there are schematics for what that will look like on page fourteen. If you go to page fourteen with the yellow arrow, you can see that the new concession stand is tied in with the ticket and the restrooms all at a central location at the entrance. Storage has been accommodated at the end towards the field. The mechanic room, the concession will have the ability for cooking. Then if you look at the home side concession and restrooms, there are several toilets and this is your dry concession, that's at the bottom of the page and that's under your press box. So as an alternate add-on on page fifteen, they'd like to re-turf the batting cages. They would like to bring in that toilet for the tennis court. And then they would like to address our practice field and track. So that is one difference from A to B. They're addressing the current practice field and track down on the other side of the road. So their timeline would be to start work in June twenty-twenty-six through December twenty-twenty-six on the tennis courts. They're going to work around our sports calendars to make sure that the students are as little disrupted as possible. And for softball, the same timeline, except it extends through January. So I want to point out with the softball, they're leaving the dugouts, but it will get a new roof and new lighting and new outlets. And the two existing grandstands will be replaced with new. So then adding sidewalks and concrete and all that behind the home place and around the press box, connecting the dugouts with ADA walk leading to the concourse. Furnish and install a new digital scoreboard with trust sign for school name and logo and area for sponsor fencing, fence windshield, sorry, windscreens coordinated with the athletic department. Scoreboards will have wireless control. And Musco will be used to bring in the lighting. So what they told us in the interview is this lighting is special, it's not just lights on a pole. It can be in rhythm with music. We'll have a sound system that can play music, so if we're hosting games, we can have it really fun. And something that we don't currently have. Baseball, and the same with the lighting for baseball, so both those fields will be hooked up so that the lighting can go and sync with music. So in the baseball facility, they're gonna reconstruct the baseball field with new crowning turf, infield, warning track bases, backstop, irrigation and underground stormwater drainage. So basically they're digging out that old baseball field and redoing it. Same for the, and that was the same for softball, same sentence.
Yes, sir. Aren't they doing it now?
I think they're just doing repairs of what had been damaged by that dirt mountain and they're putting in a French drain around the outside and they're just repairing the turf. They're, this is, they're talking about digging up the whole, basically rebuilding the field. So they're not doing a full renovation now, this would be a full renovation.
Okay, so we're gonna get some done by the presence, we're gonna get some mold on in the same area or different area?
In the same area, but this is, this would be just like a, basically they're rebuilding the field.
The field just right there.
Basically the field in the existence there.
What they do right now is fixing what they messed up.
Yeah, they're fixing a mess right now.
All right, so they're gonna furnish and install fence training, top rail, fence protection and foul pole. They're gonna demolish the current dugouts and complete them on grade. Renovate the press box, storage, bathroom buildings, all-new plumbing, LED lighting, epoxy floors, repainted walls, new toilet partitions and accessories and MEP equipment. The concession area will have a new casework and power outlet exterior to receive a new roof, trim replacements and repainting. Replace grandstands with equal number of seats accommodating ADA seating and access and then add sidewalks and concrete concourse behind home place, around press box and connecting the dugouts with ADA ramp leading to the concourse. They're gonna also have a paved parking area off the middle school road near the batting cage, which we don't currently have. Furnish and install all-new digital scoreboard with a school name and logo and area for sponsors to coordinate with the athletic department. Furnish and install all-new lighting that will sync with music for our theatrical program. Moving on to football and soccer. So demolition will be to dismantle and dispose of off-site existing ticket booths, get rid of the old restroom that is not being used, the old weight room, take all of that out, demolish the existing visitor's side bleachers and press box, modify the existing home side bleachers for use of ADA compliant visitor seating and relocate the existing sheds on site. They will then build new stadium buildings, construct approximately a twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot masonry and wood truss building with ticket booth concession and restrooms at the front entry including new plumbing, LED lighting, epoxy floor, repainted walls, new toilet partitions, accessories. The concession area will have new casework and power outlets. The building will have a gated walk-through that will serve as the main entrance of the stadium. New fencing on either side of the new entry building will be architecturally upgraded fence-type. So that would mean that the entrance fencing is gonna be aesthetic, so it's not just gonna be a chain link fence, it's gonna be very nice-looking. Then, a new asphalt drop-off will be built at the intersection of middle school road and circle. That's for ADA compliance for van drop-off. Then they will construct a new eighteen-hundred-square-foot building adjacent to the new home grandstand, which will contain a new men's and women's toilet and a concession area with no grill or cooking, including new plumbing fixtures, LED lighting, an epoxy floor, repainted walls, new toilet partitions, accessories, and the concession area will have a new casework and power outlet. Now for renovations, the existing home side concession and toilets will be renovated for now the visitor use, including new plumbing, lighting, epoxy floor, repainted walls, new toilets, accessories and MEP equipment. The concession area will have new casework and power outlets. The men's side of the restroom will be expanded to meet code and the existing concession will be eliminated, that is so that they can expand the bathroom to meet code. All interior fixtures, finishes and equipment will be upgraded along with new installation of new roofing and exterior painting. The existing field house will be renovated with new wood lockers for home and metal lockers for visitors. Cleeq-resistant carpets, new rubber mat flooring in weight room. Existing offices will be painted with new VCT floors. All interior fixtures, finishes and equipment being replaced along with new roofing and exterior painting. Grandstand and field. Construct new VHSL-level football and soccer field using blended sand compost mix with one percent crown. Extend field width and length approximately ten foot by reducing the track width, which will reduce the impervious areas. The field and drainage systems are part of the overall stormwater management system. Furnish and install new goalposts and irrigation system. It is assumed that soccer goals are by owner or will be mobile. Remove and install new asphalt track base, construct a new VHSL-level resurfaced oval track with long jump and triple jump, high jump and pole vault areas. Plexitrac accelerator, one-half inch blue rubberized track surface. New eight-foot-high fence will be installed around the perimeter of the stadium and a four-foot-high fence will separate the track from the public areas. Furnish and install new field lighting to accommodate football, soccer and track events and rework all electrical as required. Construct new twenty-one hundred-seat home grandstands on the west side that complies with ADA requirements. The grandstand bleacher system will include a new press box. New home stands will replace the existing visitor bleachers that will be demolished. Renovate existing home grandstands into visitor seating with an accessible seating section. The existing precast concrete will be resurfaced, steel will be repainted and bench seating repaired. The existing press box and associated steel will be removed and the storage space below the bleachers will reme- and the storage space below the bleachers will remain. Furnish and install new digital scoreboards coordinated with the athletic department for dimension functionality, audio capabilities, and controls. Finish and install new gates as required. A grass paver fire lane for fire truck access to home bleachers. Construct new lit sidewalks and paved areas for spectator and event circulation. Please refer to the attached plans for any layout of the work, which we went through first. Track and practice field options. So the next three bullets are the alternative pricing, which I mentioned at the drawings for the track and field of the practice field. Tennis facility of getting a bathroom and storage. And then the baseball, installing new batting cage with new turf payment and netted batting. So I won't go through the introduction because this is just laying out the order of the pages. But we will skip to page 27 where the cost structure is laid out. So they have laid out their cost structure, line items, style. It's total, as read to you without the alternatives, 18,846,597. But adding the resurface of the practice track and repair of that field, adding sidewalk lights at the practice field, restroom and concession at the tennis courts, concrete coating on the existing bleachers. And then using our native soil as a deduction, it brings the price to 20,368,497. They have offered just a little bit more.
I have one too.
Just a little bit more. They have offered us a value engineered worksheet that could potentially bring the value down to 14,693,096 dollars. And they've broken it up by with each build of what could be reduced by changing new to renovate. Do you want me to go through it?
I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
I think, I think you're, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Will it start Ms. Runyon?
I think you might.
Was he first? Well, y'all will fight over it.
I'll shoot. So I will say there are parts of D that, I mean, football stadium was, but and I worry when I look to compare the two, that I didn't see any reference in A to a new scoreboard or anything to football stadium. That's not representing where it is represented in D. We take two, we take N back, you know, hey, now we put down the one scoreboard that's not a great, yeah, not a great scoreboard by any means. So I didn't notice that, that that's A is missing the scoreboard. I think Ms. Runyon maybe pointed that out to me, but I don't think D, if I'm reading correctly, doesn't have the fencing around baseball or softball and those security fencing that I can find whatsoever.
Not as a perimeter like the other. They had it around the field.
Yeah, it only secures football, it doesn't secure the other with the security system. Am I correct in that?
I believe you are correct.
I'm not saying you're wrong. So, I mean, to me, that is a.
There's perimeter fencing, but not security fencing to lock it all down.
And B.
And B.
A does have that.
Yes.
Okay, I'm pretty sure.
You are correct, you are correct.
Which would eliminate the ability, obviously, to lock the channel to tie in security cameras and other features that were really important.
Thank you, Ms. Runyon.
So, yeah, I think Mr. Lloyd hit on a couple of things. I was concerned that there, you know, when I'm looking at, when I compare, and which is exactly what we're doing this for, apples to apples, and I'm looking at, you know, just the football, soccer, and track and field complex between the two of them, A and B. What I'm seeing is the price is doubling in one, however, I'm not really seeing where the work is being doubled. There's a couple of things that I've noted. Of course, you know, the field house renovations, all of those are the same. The renovated concession stands, the bathrooms, putting in a new concession stand, toilets for the home side, the new ticket booth and entry gate. You know, all of these things are in both. My concern is, does a new scoreboard cost $5 million? Because, like, that's the only thing I'm missing in one than the other, and I'm just not understanding. I need some clarity on that, I guess, so that worries me. And then, you know, when we have a price that looks like it does for one of these, and we have talked on numerous occasions as a board, if we're going to spend this type of money, we've got to lock these facilities down, we've got to make sure that they're secure, we've got to make sure that they're taken care of. And for a very high, pretty penny for company B, we're not getting any of that. Which means if we want to secure it, and we want to keep it locked down, then, you know, how much more money is it going to cost us? You know, I mean, this is, to me, guys, this is a clear, this is a clear then here. Bud?
Mr. Point. So, I'm agreeing with you, you know, A is a lot more bang for your buck. I mean, we've got to do what's best for the community, we've got to do what's best for the school, we've got to do what's best for the kids. We've got to do something, okay? But I'd say, just me, we move forward. I don't know if it was emotional, A, or what we need, but also moving forward with whichever one we choose, we need this new RFP ASAP.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
We don't need to delay it any longer. If there's a motion needed, I'll make a motion to go with company A.
And I agree with you, however, I would like to, is there, can we put a stipulation within that that states we need clarity on the scoreboards for our football stadium? Because, oh, and the baseball dugouts, yes.
So, Mr. Peters, yes, so what we would do in the form of this motion, we would, we're going with a concept. Changes could be made once we pick company Z. If that, if we decide to renovate a company Z, we can go in and make sure the dugouts are, as Mr. Lloyd pointed out, and price a new scoreboard for football. I mean, what, right, I just want, I just want that, am I right in that thinking or?
You could try it.
Cosmetically, a scoreboard is not going to cost that much?
No, I think it's going to change orders.
Yeah, I think change orders is what it is. Cosmetically, I don't think a scoreboard, you're talking about the dugouts. You know, it all depends on what the baseball team wants, you know. As far as the dugouts now, the ones is down, what's so bad about the dugouts is built down now? That if we have a big rain and you can play ball the next day, you got to pump water out of it.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, I think change orders is what you can have. But a scoreboard is not going to set you back no million dollars. Back to my question, yes?
So in the interviews, I did ask if we're locked in to what they're presenting. And he said during the design phase, he will consult with the school division to make sure that they're providing us what we want. So, and a lot of that can be in the same price range. It just depends on what they do. So I would second Mr. Peters' view.
With that motion, I want to clarify what I'm saying. That we're choosing this as the best of these two, we're not going forward with this.
Correct, correct.
Pursuant to the review of new construction, RFP. Right, we have, as a board, that's. We're eliminating company B from the renovation things. Should we go with that direction?
Correct.
And that is my motion.
And I would second that motion.
And one thing I would like to see, much of company B, but I see that with the value engineering, and one I noticed was that the quality could come down, the new home concession, the free concession, that's about $2 million.
We've been for 11. Good point, Mrs. Peters.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion? We've got a motion on the floor and a second. All of those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, say no? Next item on the agenda is facility reviews. We're going to do, so at our last meeting, we discussed pricing for rentals of several parts of our facility. We deleted the option to rent the tennis courts and walking track. We want to clean that up a little bit. And I think we all, it is being proposed that we go to a annual pass for the tennis courts, walking track. There would be a $75 annual fee, one-time payment. At the time of that payment, you will be issued a key, a pass.
But when you say one-time payment, you have to renew whatever you.
Annual, one-time payment. You'll be issued a pass with a number, thanks to a suggestion from one of our members. That pass will be on you at all times from your home premise, so security knows that you're supposed to be there.
You also have to do a volunteer for our background check, which takes a couple of days to get back to make sure that you are cleared to be on grounds. And again, we are not in the, we're educators. We are not in the business of, we're not parks and rec, we're not facilities rental people. So if you're asked to leave because you don't have your pass with you, we'll have flyers made up. We're going to try to really publicize this. Again, we want to be good community partners. We're just going to ask you to, hey, go over to central office, fill out your form, get your key card, and we'll ask that you not be there during school hours. And it's going to be from dawn to dark. We don't want anybody there after dark, and again, it's just to keep everybody set.
This $75 is to cover the cost of the little badge thingy, but mainly security, because we will have increased security at later hours, then we're going to do this one.
Yeah, so just a couple of questions. First of all, I really love this, I don't know whose idea this whole thing was, but it's a great idea. You know, we've got folks that for years now have utilized our facilities for exercise, whatever, and this does give them the option to still be able to do that. Like I said publicly in the last meeting, I'm not here to say that no one, that we shouldn't allow people to use our facilities, but we have to do it in a very responsible way that keeps them maintained. And if we're going to spend this kind of money, it keeps them looking the way that they should be looking. So, couple of questions. Say John Doe has his pass and he invites his brother to come with him who does not have a pass. We just need to make very clear that each person that is there must pay for a yearly pass. You do not get to bring a friend or, you know, anything like that. Every person on the premise needs to have one of these passes, correct? And also wanted to make sure that it's noted, we are not in the business of making money. That is not what we're doing this for. We are trying to break even of the cost that it is going to cost our school system for security. So, you know, I just want, I want the committee to know that the school system is not trying to profit from this at all. And then last, if there are violations, how are we going to handle that?
Honestly, we are not, we are not the police, we are not trying to get into that. We're going to ask you to leave. And if there's repeated, and there's a concern, we do, we will just.
Look into it.
We'll look into it case by case basis. I'm not going to try to predict that there's going to be any concerns. But if there are, I mean, we will reserve the right to revoke the pass if we have to. But we are really, I mean, we're hoping we are not going to get there. We're just going to ask you to please have your father with you. Everyone's going to forget every now and then. But we're just going to try to go into this with a really positive approach that we are solving a problem, and not even a problem, just a way to solve, to do this in a way that we can remain good community partners and have everybody share the load of the cost of maintaining them.
Okay, and then Mr. Lloyd raised, and he tried to comment, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to supplement this, but I know Mr. Lloyd has a question, so we'll let him.
I guess my only question is, you know, we're talking about options, we're talking about security things, and we were talking about, I like this option for male. I just, my concern would be, how do we make sure that we clearly can't think that within all what we do, that your pass may change when you're not playing or something?
It may, yeah.
The process of it and how, yeah.
Yeah, because if you got it locked up on the one key, you can't expect administration to stand there and lock it and let these people in. When you got a facility that's locked up, I mean, you know, you still will have the pass to walk the whole track, which will be up there, I'm sure, and possibly the tennis courts with some there. But I think that the deep society, when you get it built, if it's fenced in, we can't ask our staff to maintain it day and night, to stand there and let somebody in.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm saying right now, is we need to see that how you can really think that this, you know, needs subject to change and as the new athletic complex discussion continues. I don't know how exactly word that, but that may be something we need to express that where someone doesn't come in at month 11, somewhere with doing, they said, $50,000, a month later, we go to, you know, we open up a new complex and.
I would hope we would open up a complex a month later.
I think they'll have plenty of time to use these passes.
People are going to keep that, purchase, purchasing these well into the future.
Well, I mean, and we're changing the color every year, so again, we have from now until the next time they're, it's time to be renewed, to, this can grow, and again, we're going to get better at this. And so, again, this is for.
This is going to evolve the process.
Yeah, I think it is going to grow with us, because I think it's amazing to show the public, you know, we're taking the steps, we are thinking, we are brainstorming, we are trying to put things in place to, you know, allow our community to use these facilities if they want in a responsible way. But also know that, you know, it's a growing process. We're going to, we're going to have to change it, we're going to have to take things out, we're going to have to move it. But we have to start somewhere, and I think this is a great start.
Residence, keep it locked, absolutely.
This is a great start, and unfortunately, again, we say it all the time, at this stage in time, we need to know who has owned our property.
At all times, yes.
For safety and security of our schools, and most important, for our students.
I agree.
Another question.
Yes, a response.
$75 entails what now?
A year pass to use.
To what?
To the tennis courts and walking track.
Tennis court, which tennis court?
The tennis courts up by the road behind the high school.
It does not have a repair, the one over by the high school.
Well, we're not worried about that right now. We want to unlock it, because right now, at the last meeting, you know, we had talked about just locking everything down because of the issues, but right now, we want to be able to open them for people to use. We know it's going to change once the new facility comes into place, but this is what, we're just trying to implement something now so that people can use the track and tennis courts rather than just saying, okay, nobody can use anything.
Okay, that's not what I asked. I was going to put the $75 to use that old tennis court, that they just did.
Do you get access to the old tennis court, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
That's what it's for.
You can use either one.
Yeah.
You can use either one.
Either, which either one?
The one at middle school, one at high school. Which is one at middle school, I'm told, which is probably in good shape, but, but yes, as is.
So as is, so we're going to, half-ass piece of work to go out there and make changes on?
They're doing it now for.
Yeah.
Right now, you all voted at the last meeting to lock it down. So we have shut the community out completely, so this is allowing that.
But I'm changing my vote on that anyway, so I think $75, who came up with $75?
It was just a reasonable, really, we calculated what it would be for.
So much a month.
Wait, luckily, you want to break down how we got to $75?
Sure, so for security and printing of the passes, cost of the people, to the upkeep, I mean, if you put those together, we're actually not making a profit. They have been absorbed, we still.
And seventy-five dollars to do a hobby is not expensive.
That's an annual price, how much do people pay for a yearly gym membership? You know, I mean.
Our security is sixty dollars an hour, just to put that out.
Yeah. Ms. Runyon did make a motion on the floor to move forward with this. And Ms. Peterson, have a second. Have a little discussion, any other discussion before we vote? All those in favor of moving forward with the passes, seventy-five dollar annual membership fee to the tennis courts and walking tracks, say aye. Aye, opposed say no?
No. We want to.
I don't know, when are we gonna do the new RFP? Yeah, we probably, can we do that today?
We voted, I'm kidding, the RFP. Okay.
I'm sorry.
We voted to move forward with the new RFP and select company A for renovation pursuant.
But you don't need anything from the board in order to start the program.
I suppose you need like, you know, the specs and stuff. I'm glad for that.
Yep, okay, Ms. Potts?
So, we are back to excluding people from the use of facilities. So, but if seventy-five is gonna include, if, and A does what they say they're gonna do, it's free to have.
This has nothing to do with the new complex, nothing. This is just as it is right now.
They just don't have access to the old.
Mail, today, yes.
So we're not gonna do any repairs, we're just gonna do that.
No.
Not right now.
No, we're not saying.
We're not spending any money on it right now.
Not right now until we make a decision on renovation or new.
Just to be clear, Ms. Potts.
That's what I wanted, I didn't hear that part.
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna say that, whatever's decided on the athletic facility, we're not gonna say, okay, you can't use our new, but you can pay seventy-five dollars to use old. That's not what we're saying.
Never do that.
This is just to implement something now. Once the new athletic facility comes into place, we'll relook at it and revamp it. But, I mean, I would assume we would allow them to have access, but they would still have to pay, you know, a fee and have key cards and stuff.
And what happened was, we made sure that people had to go through the facilities rental thing because everything else had to be locked up because of all the things that were going on and everything needed to be blocked. But we still wanted people to have access to play tennis, to walk on the track, to do all the things. But right now, the way the board voted last time, they had no way to do it. So this gives people a way to still have some type of acceleration.
To the old.
The old facility.
But it doesn't deal with the new facility.
We don't know what we're doing with the new facility yet. Dr. Buck, we need all of these packets back. Got some proprietary information in there. She did, and we'll ask her, I'll show you, just trust me, you with that. Any discussion? All those in favor of a journey, say aye. Aye, opposed say no? Outta here.